I'd like to make a motion for a second. All in favor?
Bye.
Thank you all for coming to this special meeting. Arco is very excited to start discussing the, close to discussed, the audit and revenues for starting the budget process. I'm going to open it with Linda to introduce Scott Bassett of RSM. Everybody has copies of the audit, correct? Did everybody have them? Everybody has copies. This is Scott Bassett. He's a partner at RSM and has been his town's lawyer for three?
Three years.
Three years. I think two. So, we changed the date a couple times. I appreciate his coming on short notice. You should all have three documents. One is the comprehensive annual financial report. One is the federal and state report. And then one is the course in the board of finance, which Scott will send you why this separate report is issued. And your background, Scott.
For the record, my name is Scott Bassett of Arco RSM. My first step for the audit was in 2014. I usually clean, unmodified opinion under financial statements. So what that means is that we come in, every audit under Germany says it already standards, government standards, and also the financial statements to make sure that they're in accordance with Germany's standard except the county principles. And the town received clean pin on all of those. Before I always start these presentations, I always have to start off talking about, you know, what happened when you came in, the number of hours you spent. We spend about 500 to 600 hours on doing the audit for the kind of plan. And one of the things that I like to mention is the condition of records. And as we receive the records from Sukhunam and Don, they're really, really good shape. What that means to you as the board is that when you're getting your monthly information, you have information that you can rely upon during the course of the year. And a lot of times, that's not always the case. So I know they work very hard during the year bringing those bad information together. Then we come in for those 500 or 600 hours and we really bother them to say, okay, how did you get this number? How did you get that? Give us some support. And in all instances, they are relatively provided back to us. And a couple of other things, we, as Linda mentioned, this is our third year out here. And we started off with some significant deficiencies a few years ago. And every year that we have is that we cleaned up, they've taken action to them. And so this year, as you go through your report, you see there are no items mentioned. Not that, for lack of a trite knockbar, just from a standpoint of just how the records work. So I think that's always important because what I'm talking about tonight has really pissed me, right? It's June 30, 2018, and what happened. And I always think those type of things may make it easier as you go forward.
May I interrupt you just a second?
Yes.
You mentioned that the workers Sukhunam and Don, but Carolyn Dickey, did you let put anything in?
Everything in the work is, I think that was important too because, you know, that's a lot of work that we had over there when we first started, the square reconciliation problems a few years ago, and those have all been taken care of naturally in a result of better communication and working on a monthly basis, tying on those numbers. So, anyway, it was spacing to us as we came through that work.
Good to hear.
So everybody's very corporate, everything has to be asked where we can see. So I have to sort them into your head before we get through some of the numbers. So as Linda mentioned, there's a report that I, that we get to the board of finance, and the board of finance acts as the audit committee. So we also require communication that we have communicated at the inclusion of the audit. And there's not a whole lot there. So, but it seems like a lot of work. It's pretty standard stuff. So our responsibility with the audit is to leave an opinion on the financial statement. Everything other than the opinion page is really representation of the management. And we come in and are behind those, and as I mentioned, we receive a clean opinion on that. We talked about the plan approach. There was nothing that differed in our plan or approach from the prior year. There was a significant cap standard that was adopted in the current year. I think we talked about the last couple of years as to other post-employment benefits. It was really, you didn't change anything with how you do things and how you manage that plan. It was really, if your ass being in, okay, we're measuring liability one way, we're just going to switch up and measure it another way. So all communities were required to adopt that new standard in the current year. And basically what they did is, I'm not going to be too technical for you, but since 2008 you measure that liability based on what your actuaries said you could contribute and what you contributed, and that would be, the difference would be what the liability is. This year, to keep it simple, you have plan, you have assets of the trust, and they measure the liability on a natural basis, and they measure that against the assets of the trust. And that's what the liability is measured on, those government-wide financial statements this year. So those increase your total overall liabilities from a measurement standpoint on the full total basis account. But your actuaries did most of the work for that and brought it in, and we just really kind of worded it properly. There are estimates in the financial statements, and your key estimates here in the kind of plan would really be those actuarial assumptions. If you think about it, you have mortality rates, you have base company rates, investment rate returns. Those really drive those numbers and those liabilities for both your pension plan and your other post-employment benefit plan. So those are the key, I would say, key estimates in the financial statements.
Where do those numbers come from? Basically, they're verified by pension.
They're verified by pension. So basically, they're in communication, you know, they don't come from the auditors. They're in communication with, you know, the portfolio, with the actuaries to come up and see if they're reasonable within their actuarial standards. What we do as our outside auditors with each actuarial plan, we set it out to our interim actuary to make sure things seem, things are reasonable. They don't go full, we calculate the actual results, but we do set it out to make sure everything looks reasonable within the plan. Now, you could say, you know, in those actuarial results, you can look at mortality tables, you can look at investment rates of return, and just see where they fit, right? Are they reasonable? And what we look for, are they within a range of reasonableness, right? Do you have histories support that, right? So that's important as you go through it. So, you know, one of the big numbers that I'm sure management discusses as they go through the process and they get their evaluations that every couple of years, would be like the investment rate return or the discount rate that's used. And you could see, you know, the state of Connecticut uses 8% in their investment rate return. Other communities may use 6.5%, or 7.4% or something like that. So there's a big range in there, and typically has to be supported based on completion dates and things like that.
If I could interrupt you a second. One option that I normally do recommend when I do this is that, actually, there's two actuaries. The board that uses Millman and the town uses Sukhunam Holcom for the police as well as the OPEB. It is not unreasonable to invite them to come to a meeting and to talk about what these valuations are showing because it's complementary to what Scott's doing, and it really isn't his thing, you know, it's really more their area of view. So it might make more sense to invite them to come to a meeting. And I think it's fair to say that there's no reason why they both couldn't come to the same meeting, right?
Well, we have one scheduled in February for Millman and our new investment bank, People's Bank.
So that may help to shed some light because this is a very complicated area in governmental finance, and it is becoming more and more a critical component of what's recorded in the financial statements. Is that pretty sensible to have two separate action reports? This is unusual because the board, yeah, it's normally, everything is done holistically for the town and the board combined. And I've never had that conversation with Carol to really find out, you know, why would these things set up the way they were? The town's inverse system, I'm not really sure why it's done this way, but it's the old, it's always been done this way here. No. But it is unusual to have two sets of, two different sets.
Yeah, I think we can take a look at these financial statements. I'm just guessing, Brett, and I would bet you there's at least 20 pages of footnotes for a little pension note that that go through there. So, you know, as we said, there's a lot of, you know, mortality rates, discount rates. So there's a lot of discussion that goes to, Millman's a very reputable firm as well as Hooker and Holcom. I would say those two, we knew about 25 and 30 families that are out of state, and they're probably, if it's not Millman, it's truly Hooker and Holcom, and 95 percent of the jobs that move. So two reputable town representatives that are using. So we didn't encounter any disagreements with management.
I guess my question is, those numbers, whether it's the rate of return, or it's the rate of inflation, or it's the rate of salary increases, those are all kind of assumptions that are plugged in. Who determines what that number is? Is that something they determine? Is there a committee that determines it? Who makes that decision?
I'm not part of those, I'm not part of those discussions.
That's why I think we better have a separate.
Well, the question is, is that what they did?
Who's that?
They being Millman and Hooker.
Usually, they do it in conjunction with the government. The government, and in some places, you have a retirement board, or you don't have a retirement board. Usually, I'm used to a retirement board, and a retirement board usually sets the actuarial assumptions every year or the other year, depending on when you go through your ballot. So I can't speak at all for what's going on at the board, but again, I would say, there's a lot of stuff to cover here tonight, and we might not want to get off into a tangent on, and it's not a tangent, but we're getting into an area that we may not have the answers for.
That's fine. I just wanted to know if we want to know the answer, then the answer, that's all.
Right. And I think if we have a separate meeting, and Carol can sort even.
Yeah, we have a census, so they get the annual salaries every year from the actual salaries. And then we set the meetings so that we can determine whether their assumptions are still reasonable. So the rate of return based on the stock market, et cetera, et cetera.
But people are in that, there's a meeting without?
It's the board of ed, right now, a board of finance specifically, and the board of ed will be at the presentation they'll make in February. And then the calculations are provided annually at the end of the year based on actual salaries.
Yeah, and I think, just to move on, because we do have a lot to cover, let's let Scott finish his presentation, and then what I'd like to do is have, we'll all have an opportunity to ask as many questions as possible, but I think we should try to do it in a more, you know, when we go around the table and ask questions, just to kind of keep things fair and even. So we'll let you continue talking.
Okay. We're going to go through the cap now, which is the labor of the three, three chapters of the record. I'm not going to go through reference pages, but as, there's a lot of pages, right? I will tell you a couple of things that, you know, within the 200 pages that, that I typically recommend. There is a transmittal letter that is more forward thinking. And then there's what is called a management discussion analysis, and that should at least start on page three. It goes for, you know, maybe several pages. And the manager puts that together. And if you read that narrative, the idea there is to bring up the significant items within the audit as far as the results for the year, and go on and soon went through that process and did a nice job putting that together. So a lot of things that I'm going to talk about within the detail is really, if you read the narrative, you'll see that it's really brought up there and brought out pretty clearly and transparent in that M V and A. So I'm going to go right to the statements themselves and, you know, kind of explain a couple of things here. This is on page, I'm going to start with page 11. Exhibit one. So, page 11 is something you see once a year, basically. It's the financial statements, basically, in the cap, or there's three bases of accounting that you go through. So as you see, this number doesn't agree to this number, or this number is in this number. A lot has to do with the basis of accounting that each table or each statement presents. So on exhibit one, this is what we call the full code basis of accounting. And under the full code basis of accounting, it brings in all the assets of the town and all the long-term liabilities of the town. So you'll see things in there, your infrastructure assets that are depreciated, your buildings come in. And from the liability side, your debt is accounted for in here, your liability is associated with OPEB and pension are accounted for in there. And so at the end of the year, on the full code basis of accounting, the town had a debt position of $46 million, .5 hundred thousand. And you'll see that there's a deficit, unrestricted debt sitting there of $18 million. Just to give you a flavor of that, you know, what drives that, right? What drives that number? It's really these long-term liabilities that you're playing catch-up with. So just, and we talked about OPEB, that brought in about, I think about $13 million liability. Up until 2008, you never measured the liability. And so this whole concept of bringing these long-term liabilities in really started about 10 years ago with the Gatsby. And I think it's a good thing. So as you go through the state of town, if you're going to see most folks, you'll see a deficit in that unrestricted portion. And then the number above that is really your investment in your capital assets and net of debt. So you can see that the amount of money is in that. And what, you say, well, that's a good number. Well, if you think about some of the state grants you get to help you build your school or some things, so that typically should always be positive because you're appreciating some of the, you've got some help in paying for. So there's no surprises there in the current year, and I think that year was expected. Going to exhibit two, these are your revenues and expenses on the full code basis of accounting. And it had an increase of about $2 million after we restated for Gatsby 75 this year. And the $2 million, actually, in your case, if you kind of look about, why did that happen? We had better than expected results with your state grant review from the conservative budget process, about $1 million, just using round numbers. And then on the expenditure side, you have some variable budgetary outcomes with education and a couple other lineups that drive that $2 million. So typically, they're not in concert with each other. You look at the modified code and your code basis of accounting, but this year, this happens and that happens. So your tax collection rate remains strong. You know, we go through, one of the things that we have to do as we go through your audit, we have to look at some of your control controls that are key controls through the process. And as you went through that process this year, we really didn't see anything of a weakness that needed to be presented to you as board finance acting as the audit committee. So we do do a thorough job going through there. So really, no surprises there. But you won't, you know, matching the expenditure number here is to say for education and then trying to roll back through the report to two or three other places. It won't match your gap statements that I was talking about. And it won't match your budgetary statements because three different papers, you're measuring things differently. So just again, so this column, you have things like appreciation and associated expenses. And the next item, they talk about appreciation is not upside yet, it's pretty straightforward and that should expenditure that we're going through the process. So we'll move to exhibit three. Exhibit three is now, we're going to talk about your governmental funds. And this is on the modified code basis of accounting. And you kind of think, what does that mean in short term, right? You just think in short term, basically expenditures and accounts payable that were incurred prior to June 30th, and revenue that came in as of June 30th, plus 60 days, if it related back to in there in 2018. The key number there that people ask everybody about would be your unassigned fund balance. Your unassigned fund balance is almost $9.2 million. And that's what they typically measure that against would be your, the subsequent year budgetary expenditures, what the subsequent year budgetary expenditures are as far as percentage. But as you can see, if you look at your balance, these are all things that are short-term in nature, right? You don't see your long-term liabilities or any receivables are offset by the current revenue or the available revenue, but not like within 60 days. The capital project, that's winding down from the activity that's been going on the last few years related to the school project fund, the school construction fund. So that's anticipated. And you'll see a deficit there of $4.3 million. So that would be anticipated too, as you close out that grant, the money comes from the state, you have short-term bond anticipation out there. So the state will come into a final water on that and send you the good money once that final water is completed. I will tell you, they're slow in doing that.
I was just going to say, hopefully, the walls will be a laughing.
Yeah. They are. You know, it's not unusual for them to come knock on the door six, seven years later and say, let's see those records, you know, and people, and it's a fire drill getting those records out here six or seven years, right? But you kept good records there, we do look at those type of expectations as we go through the process. Moving to page, page four, if you want to know how it all works, this is the reference association from the full code, the modified code, and the ins and outs of why it's differing. I'm not going to go through those items, but they are the type of things that we talked about.
I'm sorry, looking at which page?
That's page four.
Forty-two.
So those are the ins and outs as far as going from one basis of accounting to the other. The next, the next item, exhibit four, this is really what happened during the year. This is the revenues that came in on the gap days and expenditures that were out. Couple of things that are different there, you can see in the other financing sources, only the governmental accounting can issue debt, and it runs through your P and L as an increase or decrease in your fund balance, right? So in the modified code basis, you'll see the bonds coming in under the other financing sources. And so as you talked about, you know, the general fund had a $2.4 million increase. And the key numbers there, again, conservative budgeting with certain revenue items, and then some prudent spending on the expenditure side. So, you know, some of the numbers that you'll talk about are your collection rate that remains strong based on half-s history consistent with everything else. And if you look at your capital project fund, you know, a $3 or $4 million expenditures, if you go back the last couple of years prior to 18, you'll see some big numbers there, right, at the age of construction of that school. So this is really the increase in your general fund, unassigned, or your fund balance, which again, the red agencies, that's the number that they talked about there. What is it? And another, the other key concept with the unassigned fund balance is managing it, right? Is there policies around it? So, you know, I always say, it's one, you know, what red agencies do you see is management of the fund balance and a policy and things like that.
So what, what names are they?
That, your unassigned fund balance actually is back on page 13. We refer in the first column on page 13 on exhibit three, you see the $9.176.
Three numbers are from the bottom.
Yeah, in the first column.
And the last column is adjusted for the capital projects.
The last column, this is all, this is all on the modified code basis of accounting, and what that last column is, is an aggregate of all code governmental funds, but that code, as I said, with capital projects, those will go up and down depending on how we should get.
So the red is, they look at that first column of the general fund, okay, the first column, that page, page 13.
Right.
It'd be the third, third number from the bottom to $9.176. And that's your unassigned fund balance. Money that is your aggregate surplus from, from the beginning, right? So every year, you add a tick from that. Your collateral service fund actually is really winding down, not a whole lot up there as that goes on. So nothing really good to talk about. There you have the summary. The next item is page 20, 21. These are your, are your trust funds, right? And so in each trust fund, you have a mix of assets and a portfolio, and what is, everything is invested in. So you have about $18 million in your trust funds at the end of the year, almost $19, $10. And those are managed, we have nothing, you know, we have no, I'd say, high-risk investments like alternative investments, things of that nature within that portfolio. You know, so you're pretty straightforward, you know, a lot of government security, some mutual funds, and things of that nature. And those are, again, we come in, we really don't tie down if they're risky or not risky or if it's the right things, or if it's right, we just go into the risk area, this is what you have, and make sure they're accounted for appropriately. You can have a net appreciation in your investments as of June 30th, 2018. So, and a key thing, I will mention that, I think that's a key concept. We talked about these debt pension liabilities, these old debt liabilities, those are measured at a point in time now. So they're measured as really what the market is as of June 30th each year. So this contingent on what that, the value of the Dow and S and P is as of June 30th each year. So, you know, it's not a future. It's not, like your actuaries, I got a lot of like actuaries, but what they do, they smooth things over five years, your gains and losses. So they might use, when they come in, they might have a different number that they're using for the evaluation, but they're smoothing gains and losses over five years. So again, we're more, this is what they, such out, June 30th, and, you know, we report, our jobs, we report that, but the actuaries can get more, you know, what goes into that how they measure. Footnote one, going into the footnotes of the financial statements. I'm not going to go through all the footnotes. I'm going to talk a little bit of a certain one. Footnote one, really talks about your accounting policies within the town, office system, you're forming your gap. Talked about the new accounting policy, the new standard that was adopted, required to be adopted in the current year, 75. Other than that, everything really stayed consistent with, and pretty much the same throughout the last seven years. Going to footnote two, these, these again, there again, if you want to try to reconcile one face a little time to the other of footnote two. I think a different type of items that are there. And then turn to page 31. Thirty-one, you can see what makes up your portfolio of the $18 million during the year, and your cash, cash equipment for the town. So, you have all easy measure, all things, you know, there's the whole level one type of assets on two, which means you get, get the market value readily, readily available for that, observable. You can see the level of your, on page 33, you can see some of the level of what's out there. That means nothing, level only means if you can obtain the market value easily, or take a little deeper, to get a market value. So.
The equity server?
Um, maybe the equity market is on an open market, right? So I think that's key for level one. Some of your, you know, some of your government securities or corporate bonds, probably you have to do a little bit deeper digging through those, but very, very easy to get, not like an all-furor investment where you have to roll things forward in the financial statement, it's not a, very readily determinable market value. I turned to, I think the next number, footnote seven, footnote seven is really long-term debt, which is just what's out there and type of issues you have up there. So you can see the town is about $57 million worth of debt up there. And turn to page 37, you can see, you know, the type of debt that that has been issued, and the balances of those proceeds issued. So. And then also on page 36 are your long-term liabilities, your OPEB liability is about $9 million, and your aggregate pension liability is almost, is $13 million. So, you know, some big numbers there as you're talking about post-employment benefits, big benefits between pension and health care. Those are some big numbers, if you want to pause there and talk a little bit about those, I'd be more than happy to. You know, the bonds are what they are, but the pension liabilities, you can see there, you know, how that actually really, those numbers are about $22 million, and I talked about how those have to get back to that debt position.
It's on page 30.
36, 37?
Thirty-six.
Good. I noticed on that liability, that there's a percent, we're talking about 6% against the liability that is accrued as a new liability each year. So this, so this liability goes up.
For pension and OPEB?
Yeah. Well, you know, looking at each of these things, they're important individually.
Yes.
And they show how much, you know, how much is administrative cost, how much is interest? And I guess the question is, and then, where is, how do they determine what percentage interest we're applying?
Well, they have, you know, they, there's a discussion with management, and they set their portfolio, and they take a look at, and they determine what investment rate it turns, right?
I'm not talking about rate of turn, they, they're showing, when the looking at the expenses on one of these, it does give you, you know, a, there's an amount of administrative costs, there's an interest cost, and it's interest on.
The interest, the interest looks like, again, this goes into a calculation, so not from a gap state.
The interest, the interest looks like, again, this goes into a calculation, but not from a GAAP standpoint. On the GAAP standpoint, you just measure, you know, the benefits paid and the investment earnings from your market value, just like you or I would do.
It's all market to market, right?
Are the market, market, well, usually my statements in the front, they're market to market. What the actuaries do is they have, they have, they project out, right? So they projected you're going to earn 7.45% on one of the pension plans, okay? So if you come in over that, right, there's, there's a, a gain or loss based on the assumption, right? So what they'll do with that gain or loss, they're going to have it taken in in the current year, they're going to, they're going to go over five years of that, okay? And each year, so one year you have a gain, one year you have a loss, each year they, they will net each other and compute the, so how the actuary speculate that just based on what their, what their, what the portfolio term compared to what they projected, right? So they're, they're suggesting that you, you're going to earn 7.5% and you come in at 12%, 11%, which you have done over the, over the course of the last four or five years. They're going to, they're not going to take that all and say, okay, we're just going to bump that and you recognize it now and we're going to go 12%. They're going to say, sort of smooth that out for the 12% year and 7% year and over the course of time, you're going to earn 7.4%. So that's kind of how they do it. So the interest that you see there as an interest expense is interest on the past service cost, right? So you have, you know, you have a fully funded plan, so this is past service cost that you're making up for, right? So if you're a fully funded plan, you, you wouldn't have to pay that because you're, you're even. But if you have these past service costs where you haven't contributed towards, then after, again, this is actual, this is my best understanding of how they can take that. And they're going to charge you interest on that. So those numbers are actual or determined compared to my numbers, which are like market to market, okay? So, page.
Did anybody else have any questions on the long-term debt? I just had a quick question, I don't know if it related to what Kirk just stated. But in looking at note seven with the long-term debt and, you know, the debt pension liability where it has, what's the number there? 13 is like 13 million.
Yeah.
But then on page 21, it says that it's only 8.2.
Well, you have, you actually have three plans. You have, you have a, you have a police plan, you have a board debt plan, and then you have a portion of the state, state headcount. So that, so I think once eight, and three, and five, and then MERS above two. Something gets you to the, actually, I have a question.
And just as a, as a comment, the towns that are participating in MERS really do not have a say or control over what they use as assumptions. There was a state retirement board that governs the MERS plans, there are a couple of municipal representatives on there now. But for the most part, it's one of the things that if, if a town decides to go into the state MERS system for a variety of reasons, you sort of give up that a little control. That's not a bad thing, because you don't have, you don't have to build out an infrastructure and manage the pension plans and there's trade-off. But I think that is one that you do not have control over.
If you go to page 57, what was your report? You can see the table at the top of the page, the aggregate pension liability.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's page 13.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
And this may be a question that I can ask the board of ending, but who's included in the board of end plan?
Board of end is non-certified pension, so secretaries, custodial, maintenance, parrots, any non-union, I'm sorry, non-certified, meaning not participating in the state plan. And full-time, has to complete 1,000 hours of work.
Okay, talked a lot about the pension plans, not to go through the 20 changes. Yes, I, I won't think of the page, I think page 57 is, is important. And you see the different plans in their, their funded level. And there's some nice charts in the back that I will talk about, some are aside ahead, you can snapshot each plan instead of all the areas, you can kind of take a look at where you see. So you can see there's these deferred inflows and outflows that you see there. Those are the items that the actuary guessed, they didn't come in exactly, they're going to, they're going to roll them through, right? They're going to do that, their process, those deferred flows and outflows, those are your economic gain assumptions and things of that nature. Also included in the town's report is a seven or eight page discussion of the TRB plan, okay? The kitchen garden plan. And you know, what, what the state does, if they have, they have an actuary coming, the actuary goes through the same process that you go through as a town, they go through for the, for the plan. And at the end of that report, what they do is they divide it up, here's say 169, right, okay, here's your portion of it. So they do that and they say, okay, town of Clint, X is your proportion of share, even though you have no liability for it, we, we would have, you know, GAAP requires you to disclose with that proportion of shares. And so that's included, included in the state, it's a lot of, there's a lot of discussion about it, but I think we probably. Your report is right, so they go through this, but it probably says six times that the town has no responsibility for this liability. Try to make that, probably very redundant, but try to make it as clear as you can, right? So that goes to the end. And, you know, one of the things about this, these plans that I, when I come to talk to a board, is where nobody in this room has a say about the assumptions used, about interest rates used, discount rates or calorie rates, we have no say in that. That's all at the state level. But then say what we do as your external auditor, you know, we do send that out for our internal actuaries to take a look at and to make sure it's in accordance with the standards. I will say that the state has a actuarial firm that, that their, their employer, they do a lot of state plans across the country, this cabinet off. And so they, they're a very reputable firm, so it's not like they're just pouring anybody off the street to do it. They do have a big, big firm that does that. But the kicker was in 2000, so we had the TRB thing, right, we have the seven, seven notes there, which I, we say a lot about, but say you're not responsible for anything. The state also has a health benefit plan for teachers. And because of OPEB, this new Gatsby 75, another six or seven pages, pretty much to say the same thing as the pension plan about these health benefits. To say, yeah, it's out there, but you don't have any liability for it, we just want to talk about it, even if it's such a funding situation. So if, if you were comparing your report this year to last year, you'd see another six or seven pages about this health, health plan that's provided to, to the teachers. And that came in as a result of Gatsby 75 too, so. Again, no one in this room has anything that they can do about it, but it is required disclosure from a GAAP standpoint. So, and, and those are the working keys. I will tell you that one thing that Gatsby did do, which I think is, is nice, and pension plans are big numbers, right? If you go back to, I think, page 81. Some things that they, they, there's a, they, they require, we'll be up to 10 years or five years into it, you know, some comparable data on the pension plan and just kind of their funded ratio and investment rate returns as far as, you know, what's happening, what's happened over the last five years. So instead of the footnotes, I would like to go back to here. And so your plan, we're talking about the police pension plan on page 80, it's about 61% funded. And you can see that the, down below, the investment rate return, return on assets has been, you know, 15, 3, and 7, and 6. So you can see kind of the range of those deferred flows and outflows, and that's, that's presented for, for each plan.
Can you skip over the negative here?
Well, there was a negative, yeah, that was a small, but, yeah, we don't, so. I wasn't the owner of that, anyway.
It's not your fault.
No, but, but you can see, but I think what's important there is that, you know, there's going to be some fluctuation as far as the funding of the plan, really based on the market, in the market return. So, again, so it is pretty tiny stuff, but I think it's good. And each plan has that, that presentation. So if you, you know, big numbers, a lot, you spend some time about pension, but I think these, these, these charts are, are pretty good.
And, I mean, obviously from most of what the town is doing, acceptable, 61%, I, I suppose can be taken as not failing. So is 61% fairly average, is it, is it appropriate balance between money we need now versus money we need to give?
You know, I would say, you know, our actuaries, they'll go, they'll, they'll come back and say that the average refunding level is between 65 and 70. Okay, so you're in the ballpark, you know, but that's based on, on their data. A couple of things, when you have the defined benefit plan, as you compare across the country, you can say Connecticut doesn't have that, but if you go like Florida or Carolina and some of those other states, you have the defined benefit plan you require to contribute what the actuary said, you know? So we don't have that law in the state of Connecticut. So you're, you're pretty well-funded, but you go to the large cities, here in the state of Connecticut, you're going to see 25, 30% funded ratios. So your OPEB, what was it, 8 million or whatever, it was 10 million. I mean, I just finished the city, it was 200 million that they, they're unfunded from an OPEB standpoint, right? So, you know, these are, are some, some big numbers and some rich plans in some of these cities. So if you bring the light and trans, transparency of what those things do, so I think that was, that was a good thing. So, great, that's what I wanted to talk about, I don't think there was any surprises there as we went through the process. Again, I guess 20 pages, I think it's 30 pages between pension and OPEB, as I was with the, so 30 pages of footnotes for your pension and OPEB. And we repeat them, and the Gatsby has the same number repeated several times, so you can go back to that.
Could you let me know as a newbie here, what that, the estimate that an acronym stands for?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. It's, so, you know, you have a government accounting standards board. And what they do, just like on the commercial side of the FASB, which is the way they took accounting standard board, they set the standards that you just had to follow. And Linda was just asking, you know, how long have I been with our standard, blah, 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 so about 27 years or so. I think when Linda and I first started, there might have been one or two, there's not 90, 90 standards that, and they're, and they're still, still going forward. So they really take in the Gatsby. So there's 90 standards, they really take in something that was really, your, your state is really that whole lot of pension, they didn't have these full, full basis accounting standards. And they're kind of, whether, I think what, what their, their plan is, at some point, it's really an American accounting and, and, and more basis of kind of, the way you budget, the, the idea is, you can only budget where you're ready to work all the time, right? So it, I think it's good, I think the pension and the OPEB and disclosure, I don't, I think there's a lot of disclosure to get to the, get to something. And people can get lost in the narrative instead of saying, hey, what's really going on, right? Can you just say that? And that's why, they're, they're going through a new process, but I do think, you know, they don't require, but I do think one of the things that should require in that narrative, in the MDA, is a lot of discussion about your pension plan and your, and your financial management. As I mentioned, you do get federal state money, and you went through those, those projects and audited those and gave clean opinions on the major programs for each of, for each, for the federal and the state level. And I'll just put one other aside up there, you know, the mission report, mid-December, we didn't get the final reports from the state until about September, September, November, February, December. So there, really, there's no reason that could really issue the reports much sooner than mid-December, just based on this third-party information that we were all waiting to receive from the state of Connecticut. So the town is really, so we were kind of like a holding pattern to get, we have those numbers and I can roll the numbers forward. So again, I just, more of that, Sue and Dawn, and then they came back, they did a really nice job getting the information together. I'll just finish what I started on, that information you're getting to make decisions on from, from a monthly basis is accurate and it was always a good thing, right? So now, that might, that's, now we can start with any you have.
All right, so why don't we try to, I guess we could go around the table and just ask questions one at a time? So, Jason, are you ready to ask some questions or?
Underlung thing, hold on.
Or why can't Kirk start on his end?
Why don't?
Are we asking questions about this?
We can ask questions about anything. And I just think just keep things going, like a little time ago, do you want to start?
Sure, I, I'm the underlung thing. So, because I am new to the board of finance, I'm interested, it is one of the summary things, because I'm lazy, so your summaries. The ultimate resolution of these items is that I expect to have a material adverse effect on the financial condition of the town. I was wondering, based off of the town and its standing, when do we hit adverse impact?
That would be, that would be, I've never done that. So there's a charity level that we have, a firm based on our, these firms are different materiality level. And our firm would have, we, we, for each, there's opinion units here, just not being reflective. So general fund's always a major fund, you have opinion, right? So you have 50, 50 some million dollars for the expenditures within the general fund. What's material, has to be a pretty big number, but typically, you know, as we go through the line, we might find little things that just are trivial, major, insignificant, that we're not going to change the whole report.
Based on that.
Based on that. So, nothing, nothing significant, and most, most times, if something would come where I'd say, you know, this is probably a little bit, adjustments are made. And we do have little adjustments every time, so, so, again, our opinion clearly states that the financial statements are purely correct.
So when I, when I read again to this summary, apparently, and it just looks like, as you mentioned before, you've worked with the town for several years, and each year there's improvements made on the suggestions you have. And this year really was sort of check, 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 it's that, it seemed like.
Now, when you say that, that sort of comes down to the number of audit hours that we do or what that does?
No.
But what, what it means is, yeah, okay, so we have the set of controls, that's what we're going to go through, right? And timeliness of records, timeliness of that, timeliness of that. So if those aren't ready, that, that always heightens your risk as an auditor, okay?
Let me rephrase that question, because what I meant was that the assumptions made by management of the town, in your mind, seem pretty much flatly reasonable, and that seems like a very good thing.
And, and the probounds for the different ones were, were accurate and vague and, and clean, so, yeah, it was a good thing.
Excellent, yeah, thank you.
I really have no questions, I would just like to thank Sue and Dawn for the good work they've done and Carolyn and Carolyn.
I had nothing to do with this, I was.
I know you didn't. And you said that right from the start.
Yeah, no, but those three people did a tremendous job.
Yeah, so thank you for, for that, and giving us trust and financial status, yeah.
I have no questions either, it's, it's an excellent report, very comprehensive.
I have a few questions, I'm just going to ask two, then we'll pass it on. On, I just, clarification or more or less, but I guess it's the woman number of page seven, I just, where it says debt administration, and it said that our bond and debtiveness was 50, say approximately 56 million. But it also says that there are authorized but unissued total of about 10 million. So is that 10 million part of the 56 or that's separate?
That's separate, so at some point there, as your, your appropriated capital project, you have $10 million out there that you haven't issued funds for yet.
Okay, so that's not included?
That's not included, that's just disclosure only.
Okay, and then, on, oh, you have a question? Oh, good question. On page three, and this is number three?
Do you mind if I just interrupt? I don't know if Linda just wants to, do you think it's relevant to discuss the notes or is it?
We can do that later, yeah.
Number three or woman number three?
No, page three. And this should probably be like at the end, but you have the last paragraph there, it's reporting the town as a whole, and then like you analyze, you went through exhibits one and two. And then one of the questions about the town finances is that is the town as a whole better off or worse off as a result of this year's activities? a whole better off or worse off as a result of this year's activities? And you give us the standards to look at. Can you just answer the question, because you know the numbers better? Are we better off?
Well, I think, you know.
This year than last year?
Well, if you looked at. Well, depends how you have to that. But really, what you want to look at is, this year you had a couple, two million, two point four million dollars increasing your general funds fund balance, okay? And we call that under sign fund balance, but the terminology made here for that is rainy day fund, or something like that. So if that's your measuring, that's what you're measuring. I'm modified full basic accounting, you know, you increase your, your network, your, your fund balance, your current here. But it also mentioned that, you know, managing that is also important too, right? So if you, you don't want to see, you know, nine million one year, and two million the next year, you know, so you kind of want to manage that. So from my standpoint, I look at that as a percentage of where you sit with your, the total expenditures, and you're right in the ballpark as a, as a, as a percentage of what you want that to be. And, and the GFOA, which you, the GFO is the Government Finance Officer Association, and they're outside of what, what I do as an auditor, they put best practices out there, right? They have nice booklets and information about fund balance policies, and where your fund balance should be, and debt administration. And they'll say, you know, they're very conservative, in my view, what they, they'll say certain things, like what your fund balance should be. And yours is right, probably right in the ballpark. So in that measurement, right, under what the rating agencies look at, and, and, and what you can use to go forward, I think you're in very, very good shape, as financially sound. But they also look at, you know, tax collection, okay? Your tax collection rate is very good, okay, and remains strong. They also look at, you know, just how, how are you doing with pensions and OPEP? You're doing pretty well, I mean, you're at sixty-some percent, which is good. You have OPEP trust, which is good. So I'm sure when you go, I'm sure that the discussions with the rating agencies, some of the key standpoints they look at, they check out the overall financial standpoint, that's good, that's good, that's good. Then they look at some other things. So, a long answer to the short question you said. So you did increase your fund balance, and you remain some of the benchmarks that the rating agency would look at, remain strong.
Well, several questions to ask, but my questions. In the, in the discussion of the ten million dollars and the fifty-six million dollars bonding, currently we don't have bonding, and this is kind of outside of the auditor's scope, but I'd be interested in your, your, your thoughts on this. Bonding is a good idea, right?
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
No, I think we should try to stick to the scope of the, and not go outside that. And don't mind them. I always think of auditors being like semi-precious stones.
Two point four million is the surplus under the budgetary non-GAAP. One point eight, something eight million is the surplus under GAAP, the one that you have.
Full accrual.
Full accrual.
Then modified accrual.
Yes. Now, we have, we had a six million dollar undesignated fund.
At the end of the year, those are five, with two percent.
Well, that was after we took.
Oh, that was correct. We're correct.
But, so, anyway, so we have, so what do we, which of those numbers do we add to the undesignated fund, the two point four, the two point four million? So we have a, we have a budgetary two point four million surplus. And now, what are our options with that two point four million? Does it all have to go into undesignated? Can we, could we, for example, take a million dollars and put it into the pension funds, or?
We could do, you know, that's a management decision, so there's some requirements. It goes to the trust fund, so the trust fund, right, is designated for those beneficiaries. So GAAP, GASB does have some requirements, and what you can do, so you can't just put it, you could take a million dollars and put it to another fund and say, we're just going to use this for whatever, right? You can't do that under GAAP. There's, you know, you could, there's, very difficult, but you could commit fund balance to things for the GASB fifty-four.
The sinking funds?
Yeah, well, you could do that, but it'd have to be very, very, very detailed into the points. You can only use it for that particular issue, right? It would take the same action to get it there at the highest level, or whatever, highest level of authority within the town, you could commit funds, but it'd have to be very, you'd have to get the auditors involved to make sure that that's definition. And the state staff just do allow you to put some money into a capital non-recurring fund, where you could do, so there's, there's lots of things you can do, but it really goes back to what management wants to do. And I think where you would start at is, is looking at the fund balance policy, and from a fund balance policy, things can go from there, right?
You have a fund balance policy that exists, that says ten percent of expenses, ten, of operating expenses. And so we're, we have it a little, we're now probably back closer to ten because of, because of some things we still, that's another question. You know, there's some called rainy day fund. I mean, we've been using it for things that have not been rainy day. It hasn't been because a hurricane got through, and we decide we want to pay, pay off the second installment on a truck, or we do something like that. Tell us about, kind of, how the world moves with that, how?
Well, there's a process for you to go through to appropriate money, right? There's, there's processes that you go through, and it goes through, goes through that process, and it's approved. It, it's basically a management decision, right? So as long as there's a process in place, and you follow the process, how managers decide to use the fund balance is really not the order to say, that's right or wrong, as far as, say, you follow the process, right? So, again, I don't like to deflect questions, but really, fund balance is more of a management type of decision than auditor decision.
I guess I'm thinking more about the rating agencies.
Yeah, ratings, rating agencies, they like strong fund balances. I mean, that's what they like.
When you spend it on something that's not rainy day.
I don't think they, I don't think they, they take that into consideration. I think what they take into consideration is the management of fund balance.
The other thing is, is there, I mean, I mean, we have, let's say, six million dollars just for the second, in an, in an undesignated fund, and now we're going to add two point four million to that, which is going to take us up to close to seventeen percent, I believe. And which is considerably more than ten percent, even a little over fifteen, or some of our members, you know, in life. We have, we have a thing from our actuary, that says every million dollars that we put into pensions on a fund like that, we can reduce the annual core contribution by ninety thousand dollars. That's a thing that we actually, so we would have a number of benefits from that. One is that we fund our pensions, making our employees more secure in the future. But the other is, the ability to reduce some taxes by, over that required contribution. Would it also reduce that, that interest percent that we have, the reliability?
I don't know. I, I, I think that'd be a question for you.
He's coming down from the center, precious too.
Oh, anyway, the answers are all ordinary. We are, we are able, with a certain process, to put it into pension size, a surplus in the pension balance.
You know, it's through the process. So.
So there are guidelines, and there's process.
There's, there's internal, you know.
As well as external.
Yeah, so those are internal type decisions. What we would do is go in and make sure you did it within that process.
You're taking snapshots.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't align it quite longer or indifferent. We would say, hey, we would do the process.
Because the process would be, we would recommend doing it before it's likely to be agreed to, or we tell.
No, the process.
Whatever that process is.
If it's the actuary, I mean, I can work with the process, that's something I think we should talk about with him or her. It sounds like a reasonable thing, but I don't know.
No, we'll schedule that, we'll, we'll get that out to another agenda. Jason, did you have any questions?
No, I, I, you know, I, I'm fascinated by the actuarial process, which again, is not your specialty, because it's so much magic and mystery, and. Then all those, and so many versions are based on that, so I will look at that as well at some point.
Did you have any questions?
No. I still think he's precious.
I have a lot of questions. I want to take everybody's time, and I sent them listed questions.
Which I did, and some of them have nothing to do with the God.
Right, but some of that, we, one of it is our approved budget, especially on the revenue side. Those numbers, when I compared them with this report, they were discrepancies.
We went back to the, you know, the fifty-two million, whatever it was, just read to the, the expenditure side, read to what was published on your website, so that fifty-two million, so revenues and expenditures are not equal. So I'm not sure, I read the data in detail, right? But I looked at, you know, because I did take a look at that one, and went to the website, as far as the updated budget, I started from the expenditure side, which we, so I'm not sure how the total amount gets allocated, but.
Yeah, I've got, I mean, I've got the budget, you know, highlighting.
I started to look at that, but I'm, what I'm thinking is, is that actually isn't very necessarily, that's not, we want to discuss time to go through that. I'm not related to. Yeah, I mean, I think that there's, you have, you've had this question, and I tried to do some research on it, and the only thing I can think of is.
So it's not directly related to all?
The practices, we have to do the taxes, we have the rolling, we have to.
And also, the revenue side, the number of numbers that are on the legal notice, that are discrepant with what is in this report, also when we read our monthly reports. And I'm trying to say, gee, this is what I thought the number was, and I just want to make sure that.
You tee off, you're independent, and you tee off.
Well, yeah, I mean, the budget to actuarial is actually presented, given to us.
And the budget.
Then you take a look at what the approved budget was, and it would to be a budget that's on the website from the expenditure side, and that, but that type.
Well, the expenditure side was a lot closer.
Yeah.
And we heard a few.
Yeah, so.
The revenue side was the main area.
It could be just, it could just be how it's stored on one way to the other, so.
But I would think these numbers would.
Yeah, I mean, from a standpoint of, from a standpoint of, you know, in total, they agree, it's just kind of, we need a certain, they're different than the legal numbers, which is a good point, because if you want to match them, you know, we can always resource them, and they're coming up next year to match the legal numbers, which is, which is a valid point and a good suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your reservation. Your time, yes, you can have it to me. I just wanted to make a comment from, as I told you before, I wasn't involved, I really wasn't involved. But I also want to say, from having, from talking a lot with Sue, that the folks that worked with the town from Scott's team, really were very responsive, were very helpful, and really, everybody worked together in a very collaborative fashion. And I think it's fair to say that you got a good report, and you got to go. And I think that seemed more amazing in light of what happened with the state problem, because that just hit everybody all over the state. So kudos to Scott and the team when he put together this year's number four. Do you need to see for the right?
No.
Thanks, Scott. Nice job.
She's got a walk. Because that will go on to.
He tells me about that all the time. But this one, basically, it's.
In the actuary, I have to talk about that, but that's where it said that. She said, let me see if we can find out what they're doing, because, you know, the gun's not typical. There's both coming out of our career, and it makes sense if you can get them all down there on the same night, or close to. Like, if they're already meeting with the board's head, and you may want to, you may want to charge people back that evening.
Yeah, or you make that trade.
Yeah, because they were, they're kind of judging the board more than. It seems to me that that would be the logical way to go, because you have more transparency and more seeing eyes, and seeing the picture, rather than two sets of eyes. Yeah, it is unusual to have two different sets of actuaries. And in most, in many municipalities that are part of the MERS system, the board of head, non-certified employees are also part of the MERS system. Someone made a decision here, whether it's right or wrong or different, to not put those folks into MERS, which thus created the situation that you have, which is that they're running a pension plan, and they have to have that infrastructure in place as well, and that's investment, actuary, et cetera, et cetera.
So beyond being able to compare apples to apples by using similar, the same, is there any financial?
I can't, I don't know why.
But would there be a financial reason to have two separate ones, or would it be better?
Well, the reason would be because, no, the reason it would be is because, much like the teachers' retirement system, you go into the plan, and these are your benefits, you go into the state MERS system, and there's four plans, two with social security, two without. One is what we call the protected services, which is police, fire, prison, that kind of thing. And the other one is sort of everybody else, and it's a take your leave in situation. You go into the plan, that's the benefit you get. It's not like, you don't have that ability to negotiate an individual benefit for the town of Clinton folks, or the town of Bayonne folks. It's possible that the folks that might be in collective bargaining agreement at the board discover that the benefit of the state is less, or they will think, or within the, or have a, they didn't go in. Well, all right, that's future discussion. Right, that's for a future discussion. So we're going on to agenda item four.
Could I just ask one other question? I mean, I asked about, I think it might, that would make, it was about the highway pensions that was on.
Yeah, I have to find, I, I'm looking for that myself honestly, and I need to go back and look at that. It may be nothing more than, than the way they're presenting it, because highway is part of the MERS system. So I'm not sure highway was broken out that way. They're part of our, our service.
Okay, so it maybe is broken out of the country.
It may, it may.
Is there a vote on that?
But I won't. No, it would have nothing to do with social, because there is social part, it's, it's, it's social.
No, but I'm saying, I didn't say about social.
No, no, the state makes a differentiation if you're in, in social or not in social. It's a whole different, great structure. And I'm assuming that highway is in, and that, is highway in? Are they in social security?
I think so.
I, I should, I should note this, but I think they're in social security, so if they are, then they would be under the next.
Highway part of building works, is that?
The highway, no, so, yeah, I'm saying. It, it's very possible, and this happens sometimes, you know, that is going to work for us the same, and it's, it was there from before, and it was never checked. We'll look into it though. Thank you. All right. I'm in agenda here, item four, discussion of revenues. Yeah, I, I don't want to get into a lengthy discussion tonight, but what I do want to do is sort of, and I've mentioned it a couple of times, is have kind of a big picture conversation. I think that one of the challenges that every municipality has is balancing the needs of what the community has versus how much the taxpayers are willing to pay. And what you've had this year is really a very unusual circumstance, because you have a state upon which we are reliant for taxation, for certain, certain revenues, which is in a state of continued deficit, and a new governor coming in, who has not yet really formulated a budget. So as I've mentioned a couple of times before, the, the revenue numbers are really going to be, for lack of a really technical term, bushy, until we can, until, you know, you sort of know where the state's coming from. But what I wanted to do was, and I will, and I, and I didn't do it for tonight, but I will do it, is I wanted to just sort of trend out the last four or five years of all the other than state revenues for you, so that at least you have a comfort level, that if you're budgeting for something, that this is a reasonable level of revenues that, of what you're going to achieve. It is very difficult to recover from a budget that has overestimated its revenues. It is easier to recover from a budget where you have underestimated expenditures. So how towns and why towns and cities get into traps is because they overestimate revenues, they use overly generous assumptions, and then when they fail to materialize, you have big problems. That's not an issue here, but I think it's fair to say that if people are concerned overall as to what is the cost going to be to the taxpayer, one of the things that we have to be very careful about is making sure that we are, that we can really justify every revenue that either was included there, and that's really based on some level of historical fact. I had a job at the state because towns were basically destroying their budgets by overestimating revenues, relying on one shots, and putting in numbers that were never going to materialize, and that gave me a career upon doing this sort of things. So, you know, I was, but my point is, yeah, and I mean highly suspicious, but my point is, it becomes a real problem when that happens. So I, I, I understanding is, we don't. So I, I, my understanding is, we don't spend a lot of time on the revenues here, but I want everybody to start thinking about the revenues, about what we're doing, because it's important that the basis, I've already talked to the assessor, she seems to be on track to get the grant list signed by January 31st. She then has to go through the board of assessment to do the process. And then once we get that, we'll have a much better handle on, you know, where her numbers are coming in, and then communicate with the tax collector, which is, you know, what's our percentage of collections been, how has it been in the good economic year or the bad economic year? And you have an excellent tax collector, and she's incredibly diligent in what she does, so I think we're, I think you're in pretty good shape. But the biggest wild card of this whole thing is the state revenues. And what they're going to, will be happening, this isn't the last year of this five-year assessment time, we're just going to be reassessing. And coming from the point of view of getting in the ditches in the real estate world, the grant list is, will be going down. The bulk of the high net tax properties along the shoreline have been reduced in value between 30 and 40%. So that, in the coming second fiscal year ahead of us, could be damp, and I think we have to be aware of that and be conservative about that. We do have some new building at the hammocks and some new, and hopefully, if this, if the school people actually come through and buy that property, we get some heck of a year.
So we should, we should know, you said, like, beginning of February.
Well, I think that there was an article in the paper today, the governor, governor checks office on Wednesday, one of the first things he's talking about doing is trying to sit down and negotiate with the legislature, bearing in mind that it's his own party. There's no guarantee that anything's going to amount of that, because we've had that before. But I think it's fair to say he is trying very hard, based on everything I've read, to try to bring a budget in a lot sooner than the middle of June, because clearly has re-patched funding out by not having these budget numbers. And a lot of it, unfortunately, because of what's happening right now in the federal level, there will be a spill-over effect onto the, onto the local governments and state. I mean, as an example, Connecticut is going to be offering unemployment wages to those people that are federal workers that are working and aren't getting paid, or the workers that aren't working and aren't getting paid. So there are some, there are some effects that are going to start to come down if the longer this, this thing goes on at the federal level. And because we don't have a county government, we have no insulating factor. It goes federal to state, state comes down to the law. So it's just something that you have to keep sort of in the back of your mind as you go through the expenditures. My preference has always been to try to do the revenues first, so you know what ballpark you're in, but that hasn't worked in about 15 years. It used to be, you could put your money on the state, here's the state revenue, here's to put it in the budget, you're done. It doesn't work that way anymore. So that's why people tend to focus, you focus more on your expenditures and then hope. So we're going to do some analytical work and try to make sure that you're coming in on target. But just a lot of opening it up to conversations so that everybody knows what's going on.
I think we're all in agreement that this makes sense.
Absolutely. I'm very encouraged that you're doing this, because you're right, we have, here in this town, it's always been expensive, and they try to figure out how to pay for it. And the time, given the uncertainty, I mean, we need to start doing some trimming, and we need to back down the hazards. Well, you know, you wait until the end and say, oh my God, we're not going to get this money from the state, and now we don't need, and then we have to raise, I mean, we had 10% tax increase around the state, because, you know, because we lowered the revenue assumptions, but we didn't do anything on the expense side. And so we had a 10% tax increase. Now, the good news is that a lot of that revenue showed up, and now we have a nice big surplus. But that surplus, but that surplus belongs to the taxpayers. We can't give it back to them directly, immediately, but we, we have to figure out a way to, so we don't create a hole in our budget like we did once with the, when we had the million dollars that we have in, in accumulated surplus from medical.
Oh, the health insurance.
And we spent, and we counted it as revenue one year, the next year it was gone. So we don't want to make that mistake again, but that's where I think something like putting the surplus into a, into the pensions, and the pensions, you know, don't cost us as much. But we do things, and the taxpayers actually deserve to see some good, something better than they had in the last, in the last number of years.
Well, as a former chief financial officer, my, my sense, and this is my advice, is that you take a big chunk of that and use it for capital, the one-time capital projects. That cuts your bonding down, cuts your long-term expense down, cuts your long-term debt down. Doesn't mean that you can't do what you're suggesting, but I really think that there may be a happy medium, but, you know, sitting in that capital projects meeting, you have a lot of projects, and if you have the ability to just pay for these projects, some of the small ones, you said criteria, it will cut down on your long-term debt, and then you really have to think about what are you issuing debt for? You know, and we're issuing it for school, we're issuing it for something, but there are too many things that happen that were on that list that were just astonishing, it's doing, wow, you know, we shouldn't even be thinking about debt for this, we should really be thinking about, how can we put some money aside every year and pay cash?
There's going to be a balance.
I think, yeah. There is, obviously, we're all in it.
Yeah, because you continue discussing.
But I would like to know who would be appropriate to ask to give that advice. Would that be your position in terms of, we have this much money, bond ratings, why you have this much in the, you know, a undesignated fund, because rainy day doesn't make any sense anyway, versus put it into pension, versus putting it into, as you were saying, pay for things in cash, so we're not bonding for things?
No, we're cost benefit.
Right, but who does that for us?
Well, we do, we do, we do.
I'm sure we do that decision, who do we hire to help us assess?
You do it in conjunction with the finance staff. And we have a financial advisor, and just so you know this, the rules about who can act as a quote municipal advisor, which means giving advice on matters relating to debt, have become more and more stringent. And so seven years ago, I might have sat here and said, oh, well, I can tell you what the rating agencies, blah, blah, blah. I am not a certified or licensed municipal advisor, and I will not do that anymore. So you have one, and my advice is you can bring that individual in at some point, and he can better explain. It's, Frank Chapman, Independent Bond out of Madison, they've been your FA for a long time, and I would strongly advise that that's the people you bring in. If you have questions on the rating agency, on bonding, on impacts on bonding, those are the folks that you want to talk to.
Just to beat devils, have to get on this, and that is, you know, in the last 10 years, nine out of the last 10 years, taxpayers have put down one or both budgets over and over again, and yet they've seen the taxes come up. And then what happens? In the following 12 months, we need a new fire trucker, we need a new this, and we need to do that. And the money that was taken out in the referendum process gets put back in by a handful of people at a town meeting. And what, and when you start putting a million, $480,000 back in as, as capital, after the taxpayers, thousands of taxpayers voting to take out $670,000, one says, why even have these referendums? Were we kidding? There's no, there's no democracy here. People are, you know, people's voice means nothing under that, under that. And I can understand why people get, I mean, that's what I think about it, as a taxpayer, but I can understand why people do begin to say, why do I come out and vote these referendums over and over and over again? And then six months later, we buy a fire truck.
Listen, we're, we're speaking ahead, we're discussing about revenues now, I know you're talking about the past, but we're.
Right, no, you're going in the right direction, I think, put into the, the revenue upfront is exactly right, but at some point you have to adjust spending for that revenue. And that spending means operating spending, not necessarily capital spending, because the capital spending that you don't spend this year, just, it, it, it's like a dam that builds behind, and that's what you're experiencing, this dam has been built behind, because instead of cutting operating expenses, and yes, there are jobs, and you do that, that's what John Olson gets so upset about, he wouldn't do any of that, but we did.
But if we invited someone else, but we get off that positive now, we can observe that.
All right, so we can say, no, no, no.
We can say no?
Yes.
All right, so the last item on our agenda is, should we need a motion to go into the session? Should we need a motion to go into the executive session? And I guess we have to, we have.
Christine.
And who are you inviting? Mary, John Bennett, and Slenda, you guys will be here?
Can't make a move, I'm going to.
Is there anything else to say? Do we want to invite Phil or?
We'll just.
On Phil or Jack, does Jack come? We're just, I love.
That would be, that would be.
I'm sorry?
We can't do three splatting, that would be a nonsense.
Not be a forum.
Got it? So we can do, do something.
No, just do one.
Do you want Bill today?
Does it matter? It's a secret.
It's your, it's your meeting, it's your purview. I will, do you have a motion?
I made a motion.
Exactly.
I guess you only turn this off.
This video provided as a public service by Kirk Carr, the Kirkster. Thank you for watching.